All right, so calling the meeting to order at 7:08 PM. Good evening, everyone. This is a meeting of the Ferndale Public Schools Board of Education, held on October 19th, 2015. Our meeting is being recorded, video recorded, for broadcast on cable throughout the next month and on a rotating schedule. All meetings in the Ferndale schools are held in public, in compliance with the Open Meetings Act. Printed documents discussed in tonight's meeting are available to the public on request, with the exception of any information protected by student or employee privacy rights. Board meeting information is posted on our website at www.ferndalschools.org. If you do not have Internet access and need information, please contact the board offices at (248) 586-8652 by Thursday of the week prior to the meeting, and district staff will do all their best to work with you. So, starting off tonight with roll call, please.
Letters?
Here.
Camilla?
Here.
Lisa May?
Here.
O'Donnell?
Here.
To me?
Here.
Vice President, Latash?
Here.
So, I just want to clarify for the viewers and for people here, that we did clarify with legal counsel regarding having a member that's virtual. It does comply with the law, and he does have the ability to vote as long as he feels that he has all the information. So, just so people know that we did cover that as we were doing this.
I can even watch him back there. I know if we could stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And we're going to trust that Mr. O'Donnell stood for that. Yep. All right. Next up, we have the approval of the agenda for tonight. Does anyone have any objections to the agenda?
No.
Okay. So, if there is no objection, we'll move forward to adopt the agenda as written. Hearing none, we will, by unanimous consent, adopt the agenda for this evening. And then, we have first up for this year, we have our student representatives, and from Ferndale High School, we have Ms. Rivas. Could you please come over to the podium? The long walk, yeah. Good evening and welcome.
Good evening. My name's Crystal Rivas. I'm a senior here at Ferndale High School. Many of you guys, I know many of you. The first thing I wanted to discuss is, this year kind of started off new. We had a new principal coming in, and it was very different. But it was a good difference. It was a new change that was, that was like a new eye-opening experience. We started off the year with the first four days, which was, it was like, the first two days that we decided, like, got this four-day, um, sorry, I'm getting nervous. Apologize.
You're doing good.
Doing good.
Thanks. The first four days was something where we wanted to unite the student body, in a sense. The first two days of the first four days were all-day assemblies, that like, where we had speakers, we had icebreakers in class. It was very much trying to unite the student body as a whole and regroup after such a drastic change of a new principal. Later on in the year, on September 29th, we had an AP Lit trip to Stratford, Canada. You know, Canada. We saw The Taming of the Shrew, which was, it was a play that we had been reading along with AP Lit, and it was very, it was very exciting. It was different, like, for definitely, for sure. It was an ama, it was an amazing experience, and despite the fact that we got rained on a bit. Now, we're moving on to homecoming. The tailgate was amazing. That was an amazing job. I really like how we incorporated that, like, how we incorporated last year and this year. It was very, it like, it got our community together, in a sense. It was something that we'd been lacking before, and I really like how you guys added that. Spirit Week, we had different Spirit Week days, and the USA E-Board kind of decided what those days are. We had Blackout Day, we had tie-dye. It was, there was a lot of friendly competition. Let's get you seniors, you know, we want that. Throughout, not only just with the Spirit Week, we, at the end of the week, we had the pep rally, which also added more to our friendly competition. All classes, uh, all classes were involved, and there were many laughs, especially when Mr. Butler and Mr. Smith kind of go at it. Moving down to the game, although we did lose against Avondale, it was, it was definitely, we definitely fought for it. We fought, and our student section stayed strong throughout it. We were cheering our team on. The homecoming dance was a huge hit. We have, we've got like, record numbers. We had over 400 students attend, like, the entire dance, and yeah, imagine 400 students in the comments. But it was nice. It was nice. It definitely, it definitely, it definitely came together. On October 14th, the juniors took the PSAT, and the results, their results will come in in about eight weeks. But we're starting workshops next month, and throughout the year, we'll have many, many more. Also, on the 14th, we had a parent-teacher conference, which also had record numbers. We had 42% of parent turnout, which is really good. Going back along to our football team, their season, although it hasn't been as successful as we would have wanted, beat Hazel Park this past, yeah, this past Friday, which is, I think they deserve a high five. Unlike our Michigan and Michigan State.
I like the offense.
Yeah. I'm a Michigan fan, so.
Y'all are a nuts.
Don't throw anything, please. Their senior night is coming up this Friday, on the 23rd. So, hope to see you guys there. Our marching band, we've been in two competitions in the, like, throughout this year, and we've came in first each time, so I think they deserve a high five as well. Our next competition is Saturday, the 24th, in Clarkston. Then, next Saturday, after the 24th, will be in Livonia Franklin High School. Their state finals will be Saturday, November 7th, at Ford Field. Hope to see you guys there, too. Moving on, we're going to the Student Enterprise Theater. The production this year is Exit the Body. It's a mystery slash comedy play. It's, it's very new, but it seems, it seems pretty exciting. I hope to see you guys there as well. The dates are November 12th to the 14th, and, and that's going to be at 7:30 PM. On the 15th, we have a Sunday production as well, at 3 o'clock. The ticket sales for adults is $10, and students and senior citizens is $5. The rest of it is more upcoming events, if you guys would like to jot it down. Tuesday, October 27th, we have NHS inductions, where we'll be inducting 36 new students into the NHS. On the 29th of October, will, will be the High Jinx and Hilarity Concert, which is a choir slash orchestra concert, where they dress up in costumes, and it's for fun. Friday, October 30th, will be our peer-to-peer costume party. It's like Halloween. We kind of get the kids together and have like, normal, fun Halloween, like, family night. On November 1st is the Ferndale Community Band Concert. It's an alumni adult band at 3:00 PM, yep, here at the high school, and I'm pretty excited to see that. Are any of you guys in it by any chance? No?
I saw it in the spring, though, and it was outstanding.
It was a really good concert.
Really old bear film player.
Even older one back there.
Well, I'm excited about that, as well. November 11th, we'll have, on Wednesday, we'll have Financial Aid Info Night for seniors, to kind of help them with the process that comes with college experience, that I have to also go to. That is all. Is there any questions?
Nice job.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
All right, and it looks like Ms. Smith from UHS is not here this evening. Hopefully, we can meet her soon. And next up on the agenda is, is item number three, the Employee Recognition Eagle of the Month, presented by Tom Shelton.
Thank you very much. So, this is a new program that we have started this year. Mr. Good and Mr. Pruitt and I got together and strategized about how we can recognize our employees on a more regular basis, as opposed to the kind of end-of-the-year, employee-of-the-year kind of awards. We wanted to kind of regularly show what a great group of staff and employees we have in the district. So, we look forward to bringing you this every month. This is the first installment, and we have three outstanding staff members that we're pleased to present to you tonight. We will each month bring you an elementary teacher, a secondary teacher, and a support staff member. And I can tell you, the nominations that we got this month were exceptional, and so the staff members that we're going to present to you this evening really stand out, and we're very proud of them. First person I'd like to recognize who is here this evening is Brooke Brimcall. Brooke, if you could come and stand up next to me real quick. Brooke was not, Brooke is a English teacher at University High School. She was nominated by co-leader Katie Jeffrey. A few notes about Brooke. Ms. Jeffrey shared that she's, has been a fantastic addition to the UHS staff, is creative, thoughtful, caring, and invested in helping her students to succeed. Her greatest strength in her classroom is the culture she creates and the relationship she develops with students. She actively seeks out improvements in her practices, dialogues with her more experienced colleagues and mentors on a regular basis, and is constantly reflecting on how to grow as a teacher. This is her second year of helping to lead the UHS Girl Talk Program in collaboration with the Abiyami Community Development Center. She actively recruits new students to the program and supports weekly sessions, and Ms. Jeffrey described a recent class activity she used, which was a Twitter exit slip regarding early chapter of The Great Gatsby. It was highly engaging, fun, and a very powerful formative assessment tool. So, Brooke, congratulations on being our secondary Eagle of the Month.
Thank you so much.
Congratulations. I might embarrass her by saying this, but Brooke was also my student as a eighth grader at Sashabald Middle School. And she rose above that. And she survived that, absolutely.
I think Gatsby's playing at Hillberry right now. Oh, yeah. Our department today talked about having all of our ELA teachers take a visit, a field trip, of her classroom.
Oh, all right.
That's awesome.
Wow, fantastic.
Thank you. We just have a total of, but no.
Our elementary teacher of the month, or Eagle of the Month, we're calling them, is Lindsay Gonska, nominated by Derek Adams. If you could please come up. Mr. Adams couldn't join us this evening, but here's the information that he had to share in terms of his reasons for nominating her. She's always on the lookout for how to improve her room. Checkboard desks, excuse me, chalkboard desks, yoga balls, seats, timers for charting, continued reading, things like that. She works with students on an individual basis, though struggling. She had them write stories and pick vocabulary words with these in order to improve their usage. She has worked extensively over, especially over the last year, with the community to bring the Blessings in a Backpack program, not just to JFK, but to the district as a whole. And she's already looking for new organizations and projects to work with after Blessings is fully up and running. And perhaps most importantly, she is leading the shared involvement process, also known as school improvement, at JFK. And simply hashtag awesome is what Mr. Adams. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Thank you for everything.
Yay. Big fan of Blessings in a Backpack, yeah.
Yes, it's awesome. Our support staff Eagle of the Month this month is Robin Major. Robin, could you please come up? Robin was nominated by her supervisor, Bill Good, although certainly, Robin could have been nominated by many of us who work here in the district. All of our secretaries work really hard around here. Robin exemplifies how efficiency and hard work can be coupled with extremely welcoming attitude and friendly customer service. Robin works in the enrollment office. She has a lot of traffic in and out of her office, and if you've been in there, one of the things that I'm sure you've noticed, as I have, is no matter how busy she is, no matter how much she has going on, she always welcomes you with a smile and makes you feel welcome, and that's the first face that families coming into the district see. We couldn't be happier with the service Robin gives our new families, to our staff. Robin is, among other things, in charge of pupil counting and makes sure that we count every single one of those little bodies and seats, and does an exceptional job with that, too. The thing that I think strikes me most about Robin is that she is passionate about the school district, and consistently goes above and beyond to help us shine. So, congratulations and thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you. Oh, thank you. Thank you. Thank you so much. You did a great job.
So, we look forward to bringing you more Eagles of the Month next month, and hopefully, this will be an exciting new practice.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, we are going to go backwards a little bit, because I see our student representative from UHS, Ms. Smith, is here. Hi, welcome. Do you want to come on over to the podium? We would love to hear about what's happening at UHS.
How you guys doing?
Hi, good. Welcome.
My name is Sanaja Smith. I'm the UHS representative. Um, I'm sorry for being late.
It's okay.
We have a lot of stuff happening at UHS. It's Spirit Week, so today, we all did mixed-match, wacky-tacky day, it's a really crazy day. Tomorrow, we're doing Generation Day, and of course, Friday is homecoming, so it's a pretty busy week. And then, we have a lot of college visits this week, too. Thursday, we're going to be gone all day at Grand Valley State, and we get to basically shadow the college students there, see like, what a day in college is for there. Also, throughout like, the month, we also have a lot of other college visits. Next week, we have the event where we go to a college fair, and they help with our college apps. So, like, the fees are paid and everything. We just try to get as many applications in as possible, so we can get those early decisions in. We have also new clubs at UHS. We have the Tech Club, which is new. No new members, as far as I know. We also have the Robotics Club. We have a club basketball and conditioning. We also have a new club, and I can't remember the name of it right now, but we have DECA. DECA has at least more than six new members, and the teacher there, Ms. Watkins, she said that they're looking forward to a great new year, and they're also doing their first fundraiser. Otis Spunkmeyer, the little cookies and cookie dough and all that, so they're raising money for DECA trips, so it won't be that much when students pay for those. As far as clubs go, I think that's pretty good. I think that covers basically. We have Art Club as well. Oh, and there's also the Midnight Golf Club. We have 16 new members, 16 members, which is the most for UHS, so that's pretty exciting, too. So, as far as that goes. Midnight Golf, it's, you know, because everything business-like is discussed over golf, so it's a program where students can go golf. Well, and then, the attendees, they get help with college apps, scholarships, and stuff like that. It gets them closer to get scholarships, stuff like that, so that's what that is.
Do they golf at midnight?
Not midnight, but evening time, Tuesday, Thursday, or Monday and Wednesday, they pick their days. Before they actually got into the program, they had to do an interview of coming business attire, and from the interview, they decided if you got in or not. So, that's pretty exciting.
I'll need to take the golf lessons.
So, yeah. And then, our juniors, they're taking the PSAT. They took the PSAT last week, and according to Ms. Jeffrey, it was really successful. And they're taking their SATs in April, so, which is pretty different from the ACT that we took last year, a lot longer. So, that's, hopefully, that's successful, too, as well. So, that's about it. Any questions? Any questions?
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
All right. Okay. Thank you very much. You guys both did a fantastic job. I'm excited about working with you all here. Next, we have item number four, which is our new CASA Director, Jennifer Gebby. Thank you so much for coming tonight.
So, I have a PowerPoint, and it's coming on any minute now.
I'll get out of the way.
Yeah, sorry. Sorry about that. So, while we're waiting for that, thank you all for inviting me to come speak this evening at your board meeting. Oh, we got, there we go. So, that's me. I'm Jennifer Gebby. I'm the new director at CASA. I've been at CASA since August, so it's all very brand-new. Prior to being at CASA, I was in Birmingham Public Schools doing curriculum work, and before that, I was an assistant principal at a middle school in Troy. So, I'm very, very happy to be here. For some of you who might not be familiar with CASA, we serve seven sending districts. They're listed up there, and the lovely Crystal Rivas is one of our students from Ferndale. We're really happy that she's with us. She's just as involved at CASA as she is here. Students come to us in the afternoon. They go to their homeschool in the morning and have lunch, and then they take the bus or they carpool over, and they come to us in the afternoon, and most students take two classes at CASA in the afternoon. Our mission is that we will provide an enriched learning environment for academically and artistically talented students. Most of the classes at CASA are AP classes or fine arts classes. We also have a huge advanced dance program, and then we have a really interesting array of electives that appeal to students who want to explore certain areas of the curriculum a little more thoroughly. I've sprinkled pictures throughout this PowerPoint that really have nothing to do with the PowerPoint, other than the fact that I'd like to show you the kids in action, because they really are the heart of CASA. This is a 12th grader, Chloe, and she is a fine art student, and she draws these amazing mandalas by hand, and she can draw free-form a circle by, by hand. It's amazing to see her in action. The culture of CASA before, before this year had been really that kids would come to CASA for two hours in the afternoon and then leave, and that was it. So, we have a lot of goals for this year to try to shift some things at CASA. Some folks would say you're really only supposed to have one big goal a year, and I have seven. We have seven. It's a little ambitious, but with the help of our great students and staff, and hopefully parents, I'm sure we're going to get there. I am not going to read you my PowerPoint, because there's nothing more annoying, but I'm just going to highlight a few things. Our first goal is to, oh, I'm sorry. Our goals were put together after a lot of consultation with our faculty advisory committee, conversations I've had with superintendents from the seven sending districts, the steering committee meetings that I've had, and speaking with the staff and students. And so, they, over the last three months, these are the seven items that have continued to bubble up and surface as things that we really need to focus on. So, the first one is improving our stakeholder involvement and communication, including staff, students, and parents, sending districts, steering committee counselors, and finance directors. That's a lot of people. So, we've been very busy putting together meetings and having time to have good dialogue. And one of the most exciting things is that we have a new student advisory committee. We had so many kids apply to the student advisory committee, we didn't want to turn them away, so then we created a student leadership corps, so that we could include everybody who wanted to be part of the new CASA student leadership, and Crystal's part of that also, so it's exciting. One of our electives that we have is called Food for Thought. It's a science of food class, and the kids, at the first part of the semester, were learning about food preservation, and so they did pickling. Pickles came out very well, I can attest, and they also made strawberry jam. And so, they're learning all about the chemistry that occurs naturally in food, and then the sort of horrific things that we do to our food to produce it in our society. So, that was Kids in Action. Our goal, too, is to increase CASA's visibility within the community and sending districts. We had a nanotechnology workshop this past Friday, and we invited science teachers from all the seven sending districts, and that was super neat. It was put together by a group called NanoLink, who have a National Science Foundation grant, so the training was free, and the grant also helped pay for some substitutes, and we're able to use the CASA Media Center and have the training there. One of our other electives is the 60s, and our teacher's room is decorated. You have to walk through the beads to get into her room, and the kids sit in a circle. It's a very Socratic-like environment, and they do a lot of discussion about literature and politics, and the social movement of the 60s. Our goal for three is to make CASA a more user-friendly space for students, teachers, and the community. For a few years prior to this fall, the Media Center was closed to students, so we've since reopened that. We also have, were able to get enough computers to create a second computer lab in the Media Center. We finally, Mr. Pruitt helped us, we got accessible Wi-Fi in the building, and the kids are very happy, because you cannot live in the 21st century without Wi-Fi, just, just ask anyone who's under the age of 30, you know. So, that's kind of cool. We're also trying to create some community partnerships. I had a really neat meeting with a representative from the College for Creative Studies, and we're looking at offering some blended classes at CASA, and she was also interested in the use of our facility for perhaps some community-based classes, some like Mommy and Me art classes and things like that. So, that's still in the very nascent stages, but we're continuing to have those discussions. One of our teachers, Catherine Yasnowich, is also a professor at Rochester College, and during our gigantic eclipse, she took our whole astronomy class up to Rochester College, and they had a great night looking at the moon with their gigantic telescope. Goal four, and these goals are really in no particular order. Goal four is really one of the most important ones, and that is to increase class sizes, review and improve our course offerings, and enhance our academic programs. That's, that is really the bulk of our work for this year, and as you can see, we have a good start on that, but we have a long way to go. We're very open to ideas of what courses people would like to see offered at CASA, so you can email me with any great suggestions, anytime. Creativity is everywhere at CASA. The great thing about CASA is students feel very, very accepted in our, in our little home. I love the fact that CASA is also CASA. It's a home for kids. And so, this is my, one of our students, her name is Jody, and that lovely costume was made by one of her friends, who's an art and a design student, and Jody shared with me that she decided she wanted to wear her costume one day, and when she was at her homeschool in the morning, some people were not as welcoming of her and didn't say some great things, but she got to CASA, and everyone was like, hey, great costume, I love the shoes, where did you get your wig? So, that's one of the special things about CASA. Our goal five is to encourage and support consistent attendance and positive behavior. One of the things about CASA is that kids can sometimes take a really long lunch and not quite get to us, because it's very easy to go to lunch and keep going. So, attendance can sometimes, can sometimes be a bit of a challenge. And so, in order to try to ameliorate that a little bit, we've come up with the idea of having a CASA honor cord that CASA students can wear with their graduation regalia at graduation. And to receive the CASA honor cord, they have to show exemplary behavior, they have to have excellent attendance, and they have to have academic achievement. The CASA Student Advisory Committee will be not quite get to us because it's very easy to go to lunch and keep going. So, attendance can sometimes, can sometimes be a bit of a challenge. And so, in order to try to ameliorate that a little bit, we've come up with the idea of having a CASA honor cord that CASA students can wear with their graduation regalia at graduation. And to receive the CASA honor cord, they have to show exemplary behavior. They have to have excellent attendance, and they have to have academic achievement. The CASA student advisory committee will be working with me to establish very clear criteria for this, but we wanted to make sure we involve students in that conversation before setting it out there. We also left it specifically a little bit vague because we didn't want it to be exclusive. We want it to be as inclusive as possible. So, if you're taking an AP statistics class and perhaps your absolute level best is a B, which I know would be mine if it was AP statistics, that is still academic achievement. So, we're not saying you have to have a 4.0 or you have to have perfect attendance, but you have to live up to, you know, the standards of a CASA scholar. Of course, if you take AP physics, you have to throw things and have projectile lab and measure them, so that's good fun. Our goal six is to provide support for the college process, and we're investigating right now. I met with a woman who has established a program out in California who is a CASA alum, and she has established a college access program in California, and we're going to talk a little bit more about it and see if we can do something similar at CASA for our And then goal seven, this is really more of a goal for me and my team, is to have a successful administration of our AP exams. Not many people realize this, but we administer all of the AP exams for all of the send, all of the schools in our sending area. So, if you even take an AP English class that's offered at Ferndale High School, you'll take your exam over at CASA. So, last year, we did over 800 exams. So, that's a little bit daunting for me as a new person, so that's one of my goals, is to make sure we do a great job on that and make sure everybody has a really positive testing experience. And then the last picture I have for you today, these are our teachers that were participating in the nanotechnology workshop, and it was, as you can see, very, very hands-on and very engaging, and it's, it might actually lead to us offering a class in nanotechnology at CASA at some point. So, you can check out our website, and you can follow us on Twitter. I try to post a Twitter picture of the day. So, does anyone have any questions?
Just a comment. I love the open house.
Oh, thank you.
I always look forward to the curriculum night. It's a rare opportunity for us parents to get to see the way that our students are actually engaged in the classroom, and so, as always, excellent teaching and wonderful students.
Thank you.
I just want to say welcome.
Oh, thank you. Thank you very much.
And I'll say, just during the interview process, Jennifer was just heads above everyone else. She's done a great job at Birmingham, and we're so lucky to have her here as director at CASA, and looking forward to, great things are going to happen.
Thank you. Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I just want to be, for our student representatives, we know we have a lot of homework to do, so you do not have to stay for the whole meeting. So, if you need to move on, feel free.
It's really fun. You may not be able to turn yourself away.
So, feel free.
Yeah.
Anytime.
Whenever you want. No pressure. You can stay. You can go. All right, we're moving into item number five, which is public comment. This is the time for the public participation in the meeting. The Board of Education intends for the public to have many opportunities to address the board and administration of their school district. This includes email, phone calls, face-to-face meetings, community gatherings, public hearings, and other public meetings. We welcome individual and group input into the important issues that confront our schools. As noted at the top of the agenda, this is a meeting of the school board, open to the public. We want to provide fair and impartial guidelines for participation as required by the Open Meetings Act, and to encourage transparency and equal treatment for everyone in attendance. We also recognize that an effective meeting facilitates better decisions and promotes openness by allowing more people to stay for the full length of the meeting. I completely bored Jim with that. To meet these goals, please note the few following things. We ask that you identify yourself and list contact information on the comment sheet if you happen to fill one out, or if you haven't filled one out, just identify yourself and your address when you come up. If you need a response, please provide that information with an administrator after the meeting, and I will call on people who have completed comment sheets first. Each person will have an opportunity to address the board for up to three minutes. Comments or questions should be directed to the board president or whoever's filling in. That's me tonight. The secretary or the vice president will raise her hand when your time is within a few seconds of expiring. Ms. Kamiller, could you handle that tonight?
Oh, my God.
This period of public comment is good for both non-agenda items and issues that are on the agenda. Public comments will end at the close of this part of the agenda. In the event that a number of people wishing to comment requires longer than 30 minutes, public comment will temporarily be postponed after 30 minutes, and time will be added to the end of the meeting to make sure that everyone has a chance to speak. Complaints about staff should be made outside of board meetings and should follow the applicable board policy. Please contact the superintendent's office if you have any questions regarding this issue. The board cannot respond to complaints about employees in public. It's meant to promote fairness to the staff person and the complainant. And the Ferndale Public Schools community acts with great civility towards one another, and we've all adopted the civility pledge, and we ask that that be maintained during open public comment. So, without further ado, if anyone wants to address us at public comment, I don't have any cards, so you can just line up over there, and we'll go from there. Good evening, Mr. Tullis.
Good evening. My name is Maurice Tullisford. I'm the Ferndale Education Association president. A few things tonight, and I'll preface them with, I am always struck by the board's comments about wanting strong unions. I think when we were considering privatizing the Oxtonia Maintenance Group, the board echoed a sentiment that if we have strong unions, that that's better for the entire district. So, I want to always share, like, our plan, sort of as the CASA director did, to be a stronger, more visible union. So, first, I emailed everyone a calendar. We have a calendar for the entire year. Instead of going through our events at every board meeting, you can browse the calendar and let me know if you ever have questions or want to attend an event. On the back of the calendar, we have our themes broken down for each month. For example, in October, our theme is making sure members are aware about their health insurance. That's important for two reasons. We just came to an agreement with the district where members are being, I don't want to say encouraged, but presented the opportunity to drop from the district's health insurance and instead receive a higher cash and lieu payment. The rationale being the district saves about $13,000 per person who's not on our insurance, and if we offer more money for those people, maybe they'll have more money in their pocket, have good coverage through their spouse, and at the same time, save the district some money. So, that's October's theme. November's theme is member appreciation. We are selling new FEA apparel, and we're also doing a fundraiser with that. So, we've partnered with Lindsay, who was here early receiving an Eagle Award. So, about $3 to $5 of the proceeds from each shirt or hoodie will go to the Blessings in a Backpack fundraising event. So, it's a way to sort of encourage people to buy red for the union, but also support an initiative led by a member. Also, at our member appreciation event at Dino's on the 24th of November, we'll have a bucket there where members can donate $5 or $10 to go to that cause as well. And then lastly, for, oh, yes.
Where are people, like, regular people, going to be able to buy the FEA shirts?
Absolutely.
Where are you going to be selling them?
So, we do an order form. We don't buy in bulk for this because of the cost, so I will send the order form out to the district and to the board.
That would be great.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thanks.
So, the other thing we've done is some people have chosen to opt out of the union for a variety of reasons, and we've asked that they make a donation that would equal their dues to Blessings in a Backpack, so that they aren't just benefiting from the union without paying, that they send that money to a good cause. So, that's November. We are having a student loan workshop on the 12th of November to help people think about how to have their loans forgiven. And then we're also looking forward to the board social that we're having in late October. We think it'll be a great opportunity for our leadership to get to know the board more, to understand why you're on the board, and share why we're involved in education. So, to help us sort of build a more harmonious relationship and get to know each other better. And lastly, we are meeting with the district on the 3rd to go over the audit and the finance picture, which we think is critical. We want to also look back at the process we went through with the financial crisis to make sure that we learn from it, to see if there's anything we would have done differently, anything we need to consider for the next time, just to make sure. We're always learning from our actions so we can make better decisions moving forward on all sides. So, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Tullis?
Mr. Tullis, another question.
I have a quick question.
Yeah?
Can you tell us the rest of your leadership team?
Absolutely. So, our vice president is Sue Adamson. Oh, Sue's right here. Our secretary is Jessie Inklin at UHS. Elementary director is Judy Smith. Secondary director is Mark Riasti. And our alternative director is Benjamin Welbert at TCEC. Oh, and treasurer, sorry, Charlotte Albert. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tullis.
Thank you. This is for Michelle. Well, we look better when the lights are dimmer.
Hi, haven't seen you all in a while. I'm Michelle Sebula, and I am secretary of the Ferndale Association of Educational Secretaries, and I am here on behalf of our interim president, Cheryl Denmark, who is out ill and unable to be with us tonight, but she had prepared some remarks, so asked me to share them with you all this evening. So, pardon me for reading the copy. So, a little bit of an update about us. It was a long summer, and our negotiating team spent many, many hours with Tom and John Gerek, and although we encountered many bumps in the road, we did pass a letter of understanding, which sadly called for the elimination of several positions, as well as a couple of positions being outsourced, one to Oakland Schools and one to a recently retired secretary. We had a total of four members retire this year, and two are scheduled to retire in June. We currently still have one person on layoff. We have also been collaborating with the other unions, which has been a really positive experience for all of us and our board, and we'd like to thank Maurice for the work he's doing to make that happen for all of us, too. He's been really great. At the last board meeting, it was mentioned that the start of the school year went very smoothly. I'm not exactly sure that all of our members would agree with that sentiment. However, we would like to take this opportunity to recognize how hard our staff worked, and if it appeared that it went smoothly, I think that's a testament to the commitment of our members. Even though we are working with a skeleton crew, our members have gone above and beyond to get this school year up and running successfully, and think we did a great job doing so, along with other staff. With everything new this year, phones, computers, copiers, security systems, staff, it was a real challenge. The training we received was very minimal, or in some cases, not so much. In addition, we have several buildings with only one secretary, which is a safety concern and poses a problem for coverage when someone is out. Currently, the high school secretarial staff is covering for the middle school when that secretary takes her lunch, and the elementary secretarial staff is covering for Coolidge when she takes her lunch. And although it may seem the jobs are interchangeable and should be seamless, it is far more involved than that. There are issues such as who has permission to pick up a student, who's buzzing who in at the door, et cetera. Also, having only one person in a building doesn't allow for any unexpected emergencies, such as an injured student, a teacher who needs assistance, an accidentally pulled fire alarm, all examples of circumstances which allow for one secretary to leave the office and assist while a second secretary stays in the office to answer the phone, buzz people in using the new security system, assist with walk-in traffic, staff, students, and parents. The bottom line is that we need more support and more secretaries to ensure that we can keep students safe and deliver the customer service that students and parents have come to expect in Ferndale. We are together with the rest of the district, hoping that the count day numbers are good, the budget is in good shape, and we can get added help to the buildings that are still struggling. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else want to approach for public comment? Seeing no one there, we will close public comment and move on to the next agenda item, which is our consent agenda. And just as a reminder, the consent agenda includes items that do not require further board discussion or comments or questions, and these are items that are just of a routine matter, such as approval of minutes and bills. Any board member may, just by simple request, remove any item or multiple items from the consent agenda, and the removed item or items will be added to the end of the agenda tonight. Tonight's agenda, consent agenda, includes 6.1, the request to approve minutes of the regular meetings of September 21st, 2015; 6.2, the request to approve bills and accounts; 6.3, the request to approve resignations and new hires; 6.4, the request to approve resolution for certification letter to initiate asbestos-designated person responsibilities; and 6.5, the request to approve the Head Start policy approval. Is everyone okay with the consent agenda tonight? There are no requests for removal. I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda. Moved by Ms. Kamiller, seconded by Ms. Butters. Can we have a roll call, please?
Kamiller?
Yes.
Lee Sane?
Yes.
Yes.
Zumi?
Yes.
Butters?
Yes.
Vice President, Latash?
Yes. Thank you. So, with six yes votes, the motion is passed, and the consent agenda is approved, and those items in that consent agenda are approved. Moving on to the action items. First up tonight, we have 7.1, the request to approve the bid for security wall and items at FHS.
Yes, as you're seeing your board packet, I'm just pointing it up here in a minute. I'm getting the page here for you. I just have to get through the Head Start. So, it'll be on page 80. I'm sorry, 81. So, as part of the bond, part of that was security. So, we have actually three different items within this building that have been identified as security issues. We were able to do the door access and the other areas of security far cheaper than what was originally proposed with the bond. The back wall of this building, which is the old cinder block and the gates, can't be secured. The gates have to be opened during the school day due to fire codes. If students come in that colonnade, they have to have a way to exit, so that means we cannot lock down the building unless someone actually physically goes out, closes the gates, and locks them. Plus, the fact that the concrete brick is past its age. As you can see, the salt has been wearing it away. So, we had bid out a project of taking that wall down, replacing it with something that was open, had fire doors. There would be a big eagle and then an F and H and an S across it, so it was aesthetically pleasing, but could also secure the entire building so that it would be locked down at all times, that there would be no way to get in from there, but you could get out. The gate where the marching band is will remain, will be extended to the top, so the band can still use that to come and go, but it can be locked and secured during the day. So, that's one part of it. The other part, I'm sorry, the other part of security is the doors downstairs to the cafeteria here. If you've, there are gates that goes across, but there's ramps that go down. Those doors are broken. Without having proper doors, we can't secure the cafeteria after hours. So, those doors would be replaced so that we would be able to lock the cafeteria after hours, so you couldn't enter it unless you had a key. The third piece is the high school railings that was approved during the bond process. Originally, that was slated for $500,000 of the bond when I came on. As you can see, we bid it for around 130, I believe, so far less than what the bond called for. So, in total, all these projects add up to $203,070, or 700. That would still remain about $2 million left in the bond for the board to allocate to other projects. This would be very close to concluding all the approved projects of the original bond, with about $2 million remaining to do additional work that has come up since. So, I am asking for the approval of Brenkel Contractors for bid category 03000, general trades, and Industrial Fence Company for bid category 02000 for fencing. Are there any questions at this time?
Just because I love to hear it again. We've been saving so much money with all this bond work since we brought in extra oversight. So, what's the savings on this again, from what the initial?
Well, originally, after the end of these projects, we should have no money in the bond, and currently, we have $2 million left in the bond to allocate to other areas. So, that's where we are.
Any questions at this point? So, I'll entertain a motion. So I'll entertain a motion to move forward.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, seconded by Mr. O'Donnell, seconded by Ms. Leex May. Can we have a roll call, please?
Leex May?
Here. Yes.
We need to have the computer there so we can see his face.
Super startled.
Yeah.
Can we move him over here?
Yeah, I know.
No, he's connected.
Toomey?
Yes.
Butters?
Yes.
Camiller?
Yes.
Vice President Littach?
Yes.
I'm so excited by the technology.
With six yes votes, the motion passes, and the bid is approved. Next up, we have item number 7.2, which is the request to approve personnel recommendations. If Ms. Joy Turner is present this evening?
I am.
Okay, if you could approach the podium, Ms. Turner, and also ask Mr. Shelton.
Good evening.
Good evening. Before we start, Ms. Turner, I want to let you know that you do have the right to request that the board address this matter in a closed session. And that if you do want to move into a closed session, and once we do move into the closed session, at any time, you can ask to come back into the open board meeting. So this is at your request right now, how we'll move forward, either?
I can do a closed session, and if I want an option, I can come back in?
Yes, you can.
Okay, I can do a closed session.
You want to move for a closed session?
Yes.
Okay. All right, so with that, we're going to move into a closed session. I'll entertain a motion to move into closed session to address action item number 7.2 regarding approval of a personnel recommendation. And also including Mr. Pruitt, Mr. Shelton, and Mr. George Butler's present? Okay. So I'll entertain a motion, moved by Ms. Camiller, seconded by Ms. Butters. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, can we have a roll call, please?
O'Donnell?
Yes.
Toomey?
Yes.
Butters?
Yes.
Camiller?
Yes.
Leex May?
Yes.
Vice President Littach?
Yes. Okay, with six yes votes, the motion passes, and we will now move into closed session, which is down in the counseling office. So we all walk down the hallway. We'll show you where we're going. All right, we are back in the closed session at 8:32. We had an opportunity to address the agenda item 7.2 in closed session. And Ms. Turner, if you want to come back up? Is it okay to stand, or would you rather sit?
Yeah. Thank you.
And at this time, I will entertain a motion to terminate the employment of parent professional Joy Turner from the Ferndale Public Schools per the recommendation of the administration. I'll make the motion. Moved by Ms. Butters.
I'll second.
Seconded by Mr. O'Donnell. Any discussion on the motion?
I have some questions. I just wish that the contract had been written up differently, so that way, this wouldn't be such an easy outcome to get to.
I agree. I think we're very unfortunately bound by the contract. And so hopefully, going forward, there will be an opportunity to discuss that. Right now, that's the language.
Anyone else? Seeing no other questions or comments, we move forward to a roll call.
Toomey?
Yes.
Butters?
Yes.
Camiller? Leex May?
Yes.
O'Donnell?
Yes.
And Vice President Littach?
Yes.
Thank you.
With six yes votes, the motion passes.
Okay, thank you. Good night.
And Chairwoman, do we need to take a quick reset? Does anyone need to take a quick reset? All right, and we will move on to action item 7.3, which is the request to approve the resolution regarding the pending retention legislation.
This was brought to administration by trustee Toomey regarding the bill that's been passed by the House. So trustee Toomey, turn it over to you.
Yes, so as I know, many of our educators have heard, the House did pass House Bill 4A22. And one of the elements of that is third grade retention. It's unfortunate, because there's absolutely no peer-reviewed research out there to substantiate the efficacy of that. In fact, actual academic research says quite the contrary, that it's harmful to children. Beyond the issue of the retention, it is viewed as a possible pro-charter bill, because the way that it will work is to probably siphon children more to the charters. And one of the biggest lobbyists for this has been GLF, who does already have some programs available that they would like to offer as solutions. So that's unfortunate.
Fancy that.
Fancy that. The, I do want to commend some of the legislators who did work to mitigate it and put in some levels of support. Some of the challenges to that, though, are that if you look at this current year's second graders, those opportunities wouldn't be afforded to the kids, because it would go into effect next year. And so it doesn't have the opportunity for that. And while it is possible that the final version will have, you know, because it now goes to the House, it is possible that the final version will have a provision in it to allow our superintendent to decide to make other interventions instead. However, again, looking at it as a charter bill, it is also noted that the kids who will be most affected by this are likely the children who are in districts run by emergency management. And so those children will unfortunately not have a superintendent standing up for them, their families, and other interventions. And so it's a little bit of a social justice issue, and it's a lot of bad educational decision. And so I have revised the resolution to reflect that the House did pass 4A22, and to now send this document to the Senate.
Should we go ahead and read it? Do you want to read it?
I think we can take the motion unless there's any?
In the interest of time, I think we can just have it be in the minutes, and we'll, you know, we can have it posted, and people can see it. But basically, can you summarize? It's basically?
I think that was the summary of it.
Okay, great, so I'll take the motion.
Can I just, before the motion gets made? Is there a? Well, I saw, I have an email from this afternoon that I received. But was that corrected in any way, updated, amended?
Yes, we have the updated version since it passed the House.
Okay, because it also, well, you just noticed that it said Ferndale Consolidated Schools at the bottom.
Oh. That's what happens when you?
We all said the?
When you? Thank you. So this was actually?
And two Ls and O'Donnell, we need to add.
Okay, so we'll clean up some of the typos. Thank you for that. So I will add that this was, this is a merging of resolutions that were passed by Lincoln Schools, by Plymouth Schools did one, as did, I'm trying to remember the third. And so I sort of clumped them together, and so that's how we became Ferndale Consolidated Schools. I apologize. I do know who I work for. So then what I can do is?
Didn't know we took over any other school districts.
We can then take, I'll entertain a motion to approve the resolution regarding pending retention legislation, which will be corrected for any type of backwards.
And it also does, by the way, include in it that the State Board of Education has also made a statement against retention.
And I want to, any other questions before we take a motion, Jim?
No.
Okay. All right, moved by Ms. Camiller, seconded by Ms. Butters. And any discussion? Seeing none, we can do a roll call, please.
Butters?
Yes.
Camiller?
Yes.
Leex May?
Yes.
O'Donnell?
Yes.
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 I don't know.
I don't even know what we're voting on, so?
Third grade retention resolution.
Oh, that, I've studied, yes.
Yeah.
All right. Okay, with seven yes votes, the motion is approved, adopting the resolution regarding retention legislation. And now moving on to item number eight, specifically 8.1, which is the superintendent's report.
So my, actually, my report today will be our legal counsel, George Butler, who is here to inform us of the Detroit school legislation that actually Governor Snyder was presenting today. Since we do have two buildings, UHS and our alternative ed TCEC, that do have a large majority of Detroit students, this does have the possibility of an impact on the district.
Is this the newest?
This is just an amalgamation of finished already seen, I'm sure.
Hello, Kevin from Chicago.
Hi, Jim.
You can see his face right there.
Oh, there he is.
But his voice is coming from there.
Got it.
He always has that smile on, I love it.
That's just a cutout.
That's actually?
Good evening, everyone.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Both present and virtual.
It's interesting that you would have passed the resolution you did on the third grade reading. Also, you should know, on Friday, they passed the latest incantation of the Teacher Evaluation Bill. And, you know, I guess mine is not to comment on politics, but things seem to go from bad to worse in the sense that we're the ones that have to deal with these pieces of legislation and the ripple effect they cause across districts. Forget your views on whether it has pedagogical, makes pedagogical sense or not. The way it just sort of disregards the way districts conduct business, how they're structured, what the hard-fought collective bargaining agreements say, what both signatories to that collective bargaining agreement meant, seems to be of no import when it comes to perceptions that legislation can fix problems that not everyone believes exists, but that some believe exist, and their beliefs hold the day. So I would encourage you to read the latest incantation of that bill. My understanding is, is that both bills will meet with very little resistance in going back to the Senate. And could both, or at least one of them, will get passed this week, as I understand it, and go forward. I think the, correct me if I'm wrong, in the promotion delay, that requirement has been delayed to the 1920 year? Did that delay get inserted into that bill? I believe so. Yeah, so that's, but again, it doesn't matter. If it passes, it passes. What it says is what it says. And the exemptions from being held back, they did put in some language regarding special education students that got in at the last minute. And they did purportedly put in a funded portion for, not everything, everyone said, was an unfunded mandate in that bill, but they did put a little portion in there. But it's limited to the money they originally set aside for enforcement of the right-to-work legislation, as I understand it, so? I heard we would get $38,000.
Yeah, my understanding was?
One time only, and we have to probably hire a reading specialist. Well, the reading specialist position has been elevated to clearly, every district's going to have to have one, it seems to me, regardless of size, regardless of the way you deploy that person. And all of the bells and whistles that person has to bring to the table look like after-employment bells and whistles that they have to acquire, because the need to hire them is going to be immediate if you're going to start validating data and that sort of thing. So it's interesting. The portions they thought arguably were unfunded mandates weren't the things everyone else thought were unfunded mandates in that bill.
I didn't see the final numbers, but I know when I had talked to Mary Luje about it, who is, Dr. Mary Luje is the premier authority on retention and third grade reading and intervention and all that in the state. And at that point, I think they were funding it at about $50 million, they were hoping, maybe at best. And her estimate was that the legislation that has been passed in other states cost upward of $1 billion to do it correctly. So just to give you sort of an idea of the gap in funding.
Well, in the limited English proficiency, exception for, that turns on having less than three years' instruction in English if the child had intensive reading intervention for two or more years and was retained in kindergarten, grade one, grade two, or grade three. So my guess is, to stop that from happening at a later date, you're going to see K-12s do everything they can in the pre-K, K, and onward level. And then, when the child doesn't pass, they'll basically be able to go over to a charter school, it would seem to me, and get exempted from that based on the record they bring with them from the K-12 school. They don't differentiate between it being, you know, it's only available to the school that did all those things. It's based on the child's record at school, wherever that school may have been. So I can see a brand-new, once again, private opportunity here arising for people that want to make money on capitalizing on whatever the negative side is to retention and preventing that from occurring, or seeing a child through that process so that it doesn't happen again. And of course, there is a limitation on the retention. So anyway, enough of that. The reason I came here tonight was to discuss, amongst other things, some bills that I circulated in the legal FYI, which I know board members received. And these are called the empowered district and empowered zone bills. And what I've included in your handout is a part of those bills, not all of it. But more importantly, because it's linked, I've included our good old friend 1280C, that statute, as well as the gubernatorial order whereby all of the powers vested in the state redesign, reform office were transferred by executive order from the Michigan State Board of Education and State Superintendent's Authority into the Department of Technology Management and Budget. Which, if you look at a lot of educational legislation being proposed now, those, that office plus the Department of Treasury and maybe Department of Education are now being viewed as a equal-cornered triangle. And any one of them, based on whoever's in power and wants to utilize any one of those offices, can be the office that oversees public education going forward, at least in its most critical elements. So these bills, which were touted as being, quote, "the Detroit bills", are about Detroit, but only in part. The vast majority of the authority and new design and conceptual purpose of these bills has nothing to do with Detroit necessarily. And in essence, as these materials point out to you, these bills create what's called an empowered district. What's Detroit-specific about that is that Detroit automatically becomes an empowered district under this legislation, not by reference to its name, Detroit Public Schools, but by reference to the fact that any former first-class school district that is no longer a first-class school district automatically becomes an empowered district. Well, there's only one such district like that, and that's Detroit. So regardless of its financial condition, regardless of its academic performance, and therefore, simply because it was once first-class and isn't, i.e. because it's lost students, it automatically gets endowed with the title empowered district by the legislation. Any other district to be called an empowered district has to be so declared by virtue of the state's determination that it is not presently able to pay its current obligations. That is not a definition of bankruptcy, that's not a definition of insolvency. That is simply a definition that one aspect of our government gets to look at and make a decision about. And that is, are, let's take Ferndale, for example, is it presently able to pay today all of the obligations that are due with respect to it today? And the answer, like almost every single district in the state, is the answer is no. First and foremost, most districts borrow money. They borrow money to obviate the fact that if they were called upon to pay all their bills when they were due at the beginning of the school year, they would not have any funds to do that with. Some schools might have a fund equity that could help them to an extent, but most districts have depleted those to the point where they have to borrow. And the primary reason they borrow is that the funding from the state is behind, in terms of your fiscal year, by about three months. So you're not even funded until you've already incurred and have incurred for quite some period of time obligations, which technically, absent borrowing money, you wouldn't presently be able to pay. And low and behold, one of the first criteria, they say, or the bill directs the state? And low and behold, one of the first criteria, they say, or the bill directs the state to look at in determining whether you're presently able to pay your bills, is whether you borrow money in order to pay your bills. It's one of the criteria that could indicate the kind of fiscal, I'm going to call it stress, fiscal condition that would enable them to simply declare your district as an empowered district. But let's get back to Detroit, because at the end of the day, for Ferndale's purposes, it doesn't matter which district is called an empowered district, if Detroit's going to be called one. The minute an empowered district is created, every single school district that surrounds that district and touches it, even if only by inches, automatically gets included in what's called the empowered zone. Well, the governance structure that the law imposes on an empowered district like Detroit is a commission appointed, the majority of whose members are appointed by the governor, who then in turn hire an individual called a manager, who then has complete and absolute prerogative to operate all of the assets in the empowered district, take them over, and impose an academic performance plan on not only all the schools that were in the empowered district, Detroit, for example, but all public school academies located within Detroit's jurisdiction who have nothing to do with Detroit. So this bill would capture all the EAA schools and all the charter schools within the Detroit district. And they would all come under the auspices and the governance of this thing called a commission and a manager. They would be put under a plan designed by the manager, which has to be approved, and here's the connection with 1280C, by the state school reform officer, before they can be implemented. Those plans call for the letter grading of those schools, A, B, C, D, there seems to be no E or F, and depending on how they ultimately perform in accordance with that grading system, they may face reincantation as a different kind of school, some sort of reformation or possible closure, including the schools that weren't originally under the governance of the district that became the empowered district. What's more troubling, if that isn't troubling enough, is that, as I said, upon the creation of an empowered district like Detroit, all the school districts that surround Detroit but touch it in any way, shape, or form, fall into what's called an empowered zone, and every school in that empowered zone that has more than 50% Detroit original resident students in it falls under the governance of that commission and that manager, regardless of what kind of school they are. In other words, public school academies included. Worse, if an entire district's student population is more than 50% students originally who came from Detroit, no matter how many years ago, no matter how legally, the entire district comes under the governance of that commission and that manager. And if you look at this map, you can see which the districts are that touch upon Detroit Public Schools. Here, I have an extra. And you can also, I'm sure, from your experience as a board member, surmise which are going to have problems with respect to buildings in their district and which may have problems with respect to their total student population. And remember, the way a district that is not Detroit could have become heavily populated by kids originating from Detroit was because of a change in the law that another Republican administration implemented quite some time ago called open enrollment, which was pitting one district against another in competition for their students, where you did not need one district's permission to enroll kids from it because those kids were coming from either your ISD or contiguous ISD. And a lot of districts, you know, truth be told, were using open enrollment to backfill what had been loss of enrollment in certain quadrants or areas of their school. A lot of districts offered open enrollment also to offer a positive education alternative to students that were otherwise leaving other districts but were going to public school academies rather than another district, because there was no pathway for them to do that. But make no mistake, the open enrollment program was dovetailed with the onset of charter schools in Michigan as a means to provide, and this was the philosophical basis for all that, then, was parental choice reigned supreme. Parents should be free to choose a variety of different educational options for their children. This bill seems to have a punitive intent of punishing those that availed themselves of the open enrollment opportunity, and parents that made a choice, say, in Detroit, to have their child educated, say, in Redford, Ferndale, or whatever the case may be. By simply looking at the demographic of a building and deciding whether that building should fall back under or fall into the governance of this new thing called a commission and manager, irrespective of how well those students were doing in that building, which to me is mystifying. I might understand it if it was, hey, they left Detroit, went to this other school, and they're being equally deserved there as they were in the school their parents, you know, tried to escape from. But the capture of schools outside of Detroit is based solely on student demographics and whether more than 50% of the students in a building come from the district that is now the empowered district. Again, it appears to me the basis for that is that if the state's taking Detroit over, they realize they certainly can't do it on the budget represented by the number of kids that are still in Detroit, and need to recapture all the ones Detroit lost, for whatever reason, to other districts, in order to even make a financial go of it.
George, one thing I saw today was even the number, I think that Snyder put out, that $1,100 of each student FTE goes to pay off the debt. And Representative McCready, about two weeks ago, said the exact same thing in a meeting with me, that I'm going to ask the boss and Republicans to say that if you take a Detroit student in your district, you're going to get $1,100 less, so that can go pay off the debt. So I found it very interesting, both McCready and two weeks later Snyder are saying matching statements.
Well, if that doesn't prove to you that the capture of these schools outside of Detroit, based on not academics or economics, is a money grab and a need to bring revenue back in Detroit to deal somehow with the debt. Notice also, these bills do not have the state government extending its full faith and credit to in any way, shape, or form guarantee the payoff of Detroit's debt or anything of the kind. All they're doing, and this is why they rejected the Skilman proposal, because that called for a commitment on the part of the state with respect to some portion of Detroit's debt. All they're saying is, we're going to ditch the debt and leave it behind, take all the assets, because all of those assets are technically unsecured by that debt, because you cannot lean public property, you can't levy a judgment against or anything. We're going to take all the treasure, the buildings and the kids, we're going to create a new entity, that new entity is going to by law be declared to be a school district, which coincidentally, all the kids will now be residing in, and that district will get the money those kids represent. And the district that has been supplanted will be left behind with the debt to service it in any way, shape, they can, if they can, putting the state in the driver's seat of being able to negotiate that debt without any corresponding commitment that they're going to do anything about. So what's interesting is, when these bills first came out, and, you know, I thought I was pretty proficient in knowing how sausage was made in Lansing, but these bills were written, have no sponsor, still have yet to find a credible sponsor, and they were written by the executive branch, as far as I can tell. At least the lawyers that I know write all their stuff, are clearly the authors of this by virtue of where semicolons appear in full colons, inappropriately appear in things like that. We know who those scrivners are. So they're marching these around. I thought they were bad enough in and of themselves, but then I realized, well, maybe there's another motive for these, and it's to soften up the ground for other concepts, which heretofore, nobody would even be willing to touch with a 10-foot pole, such as a voucher concept. And so it's interesting that equally powerful Republicans within the Republican majorities of both houses are, had put together a position piece on a new concept for vouchers, which would avoid any constitutional challenge, and that's a public-to-public voucher, as opposed to a public-to-anywhere voucher. When you have a public voucher that can go to private schools, it raises all kinds of constitutional issues. If you limit a child's voucher to only being available at other public schools, there is no constitutional issue. It's state money just being repositioned at the choice of the parent. So, kind of in response, and seeming like, seemingly as pushback on what the governor was wheeling out with these empowered zones and districts, another group in the legislature put a position piece forward, which I'm sure you've all seen on the voucher proposal, and I think somewhere in between, or some concept in between, will be what this ends up being, whether it's taking money away from people that accepted Detroit kids or valuing them less for the now-enrolling district, and siphoning that money back into Detroit for whatever purpose, or an empowered zone concept, or a voucher concept to further drain Detroit completely and thereby make it easier to break up into small pieces and hand over to private operators or whatever. It's going to be some version of all those, but they all have one thing in common, and this is the part that I'm kind of alerting to you two. Not only should you be concerned about how this would affect you if Detroit were the empowered district, but the other thing is, there's, this is consistent with what I've been preaching, I think, from the get-go with you folks and for years now, that this is part and parcel of a plan to slowly dismantle the K-12 system as we know it, and certainly change the dynamic of locally-elected boards of education into a new system managed by singular appointees of either a board appointed by the governor or the governor himself, and operational, educational facilities operated by private operators, or public-private consortia of private operators. So although every time the EAA seems to have shaken its past and dusts itself off, and once again is held up by the governor as being the best apparatus for accomplishing all this turnaround, they thankfully shoot themselves in the foot again, and they're being investigated, as we speak, for past indiscretions on prior members of their administration. But I'm telling you, he firmly still believes the structure known as the EAA is the exact kind of structure that he's envisioning as the kind of structure that should be operating selected but huge portions of Michigan public schools on a going-forward basis, and be doing so without aid or consent of a locally-elected school board. That's the paradigm that he sees as the best methodology for dealing with public education in its most troubled areas. The high-poverty corridor going all the way up to Saginaw, the greater Detroit metropolitan area, southern Macomb County, Genesee, little smidgens of Oakland, all of Wayne Resa, what if they have 100 and some odd buildings that are in the crosshairs? And while this is all going on, and the reason I included 1280C is to remind you that they really didn't need to transfer 1280C to DTMB, except that they had already hatched deals to Escon software there for new data metric measuring in bundles of data that we aren't used to generating to MDE, so there was money to be made over there, and somebody's making it. So now you're being edicted through your ISDs to aggregate your data in 20 new different bundles that you're not used to using. That data has to get reported to DTMB and not to MDE, and that data's going to be analyzed through some sort of software metric where the nature of the data will generate automatic responses through computer analysis as to what the problem is in your district and how to fix it. And absent a more cogent explanation of what that data represents, they'll live with whatever the rubric dictates the answer ought to be in analyzing that data. So, for example, one of the metrics in their new data system is, if there's a high incident of expulsion in a district as compared to 20 years ago versus the last 20 years, it will automatically mean that there's something wrong with the culture of that school, and that therefore there needs to be some level of intervention to turn that negative situation around. In most real worlds, higher incidences of student discipline are indicative of something. But what they forgot to remind themselves of was that they edicted through the zero-tolerance law that we mandatorily expel students for certain offenses, that prior to that, we used mitigating circumstances and, you know, intense factual analysis to decide before we automatically made a decision. So the zero-tolerance laws have independently upticked the number of expulsions in every school district across Michigan, to some degree or another, when compared with the prior 20-year period. And they completely forgot that. So when they were reminded of that, there was lots of scurrying around in the IT room, I'm sure, at DTMB, and, you know, that's being fixed. There are many other things like that. The problem with all of it is, is that it envisions the, I won't say the most important, but enormous segments of our public education community, in the very near term, being operated by people who weren't elected, being overseen by agencies that the Constitution didn't see fit to appoint as overseers of public education. And those power structures that are going to supplant the locally-elected Board of Education will be allowed to ignore all of the contractual commitments of every nature and kind that that board had entered into on behalf of that district. Why? Because that district will still exist, but just won't have the assets now being operated by somebody else, because those now fall into a broader district created by law called the Reform District, the Empowered District, whatever the case may be, which has all of the authority to collect the revenue for students now within its boundaries. And they supplant, in terms of their ability to enroll those students, keep them enrolled and get funded for them, the district from whence they came, and its authority to do the same thing. So they'll, they'll tell you, till they're blue in the face, we're not abolishing a Board of Education, we're simply creating a new district, and guess what? In varying degrees, certain schools within yours fall within that now for the reasons stated. They're either underperforming fiscally, they're underperforming academically, and so all the governance that goes with that, including everybody employed within the building, everybody employed within the district dedicated to that building by some degree or another, are your concern, not ours. We're taking the students in the building with us, and now they're under this commission and manager. And it's imminent. To me, these bills represent a huge, giant leap forward in what I have been saying all along, is a plan to dismantle the public education system as we know it, and causes, I would hope, boards like you to scratch your head and say, well, why are we here? Why do you think districts were designed the way they were designed? Where did we come from? If you try to Google research or do legal research on where was the first district map, you won't find it. What you'll find is, school districts were actually created by municipal entities of which they were a part, or where the districts eventually grew larger than the original creating municipality. Their growth and transcendence of the original municipality was foreseen by the very municipality that created them. They were not creations of the state, it was not a top-down creation, it was a bottom-up creation. And all of the structures and the buildings and the debt and the repayment of debt and all of the many, many decades of building the resources, utilizing the resources, none of that was funded by the state, it was funded by the people that were part of your district and whatever municipality that decided to create you, or in some cases, actually, school districts were created by a subdivision that dedicated an area to the creation of a school. A school was created, and the school grew from there. But it was a bottom-up growth born out of a constitutional commitment that there will be a state system of education. By the time the legislature got involved, districts had already existed, and they just reaffirmed that or etched it in stone when they started legislating with respect to their constitutional obligation and public, with respect to public education. So boards need to, I think, wrestle, and this transcends just Ferndale's boundaries. This really goes to the heart of what is a school board, very akin to the resolution you passed tonight, to weigh in. You know, it's important for boards to weigh in on whether they think certain things the state are doing make pedagogical sense, not just for their district, but for public education in general. You're all ambassadors of a greater whole called a statewide system of public education. So I bring these things to your attention in the hope that you will reach out and find out, Blake is very well-plugged into where the epicentres are of burgeoning opposition to a lot of these things, who's leading the charge, who isn't. And it's important to figure out where people stand on these issues philosophically, because I would think for a locally-elected Board of Education, although your primary mandate clearly is Ferndale and the students of Ferndale, when something like this can threaten that. And here's the other huge problem with this legislation. Assuming two or three buildings get taken from a district because the demographics of that building are more than 50% originally Detroit kids, what happens to the budget and the fiscal integrity of that district going forward? It no longer gets that revenue? That is more impactful than a sudden loss of enrollment. You've seen districts teetering on the edge of disaster when they lose 50 students. Can you imagine losing three buildings' worth of students? It also doesn't contemplate, well, where do the other percentage that aren't the more than 50% originally Detroit kids go? Do they go with that? Do they go with that building? Nobody thought that issue through. All it says is the building goes to them, simply because of that demographic. Doesn't say some stay behind, some don't. It all goes to them, the entire asset. Clearly, it doesn't physically move. So then you ask yourself the question, well, we budgeted our debt, we sold people bonds on the basis that these were our buildings, this was our projected enrollment. All that crashes and burns. None of that was thought through in these types of bills, probably because who they didn't talk to versus who they did talk to. So we used to see bills like this, like the bill that came out three years ago that said ISDs may not engage in any business that the private sector can provide. And people laughed at those bills and thought, "That's just, that's just ludicrous." That bill's getting resurrected because its time hadn't come three years ago, it has now. There are two, the next entity in the sight of, it seems, both houses and the governor are ISDs themselves. They are not trusted organizations by this current government. They're perceived as unnecessary organizations to a large extent. So there, for example, there are two bills pending right now. One's called the ISD disassembly bill. This kind of speaks for itself. And basically what that bill says, gee, if you haven't gone out for a milage to do career technical education, then why shouldn't you be dismantled? In other words, only the ones that have, that have something that the government can't steal because the people authorized it, those are being challenged. And then the ones that have, the bill goes on to say, "And by the way, your school districts can opt out of that, and whatever portion of the funds attributable per capita to them for the CEG program, you lose and go straight to them so they can operate their own." So it's a dismantling type of operation. So you have a funny dichotomy happening now in what used to be sort of a monolithic K-12 block. You've got our principals being told in varying degrees by people that, hey, you know, look at what you're making now. Yeah, you're paying into the public retirement system. Look at what you're making now. Supposing you were withdrawn from that system, but I doubled your salary to be one of these managers, operating a collection of buildings because you so excellently operated your building, people, people have to eat, people have to bring money home to their families. That's an attractive offer. So the monolithic block of principals could easily be eroded by that kind of enticement as being players in this new scenario. ISDs are being told, hey, if you want to have relevancy in your, in our eyes, and it's an uphill battle to get it with us, we want you entering into contracts to allow your capacity to be used after we steal your constituent school buildings from several of your constituent districts. We want you to operate those despite what your constituent districts might say. So they're trying to drive a wedge now between ISDs. Some are seeing this as an opportunity for them to kind of reinvent themselves and get ahead of the anti-ISD perception. Others are saying, hell no, we're not going to become the strong arm of our constituent districts. We're already trying to help them with respect to their priority schools and failing schools. We're not going to do this by a contract with the state where we go in and take everybody over. Plus, they're offering the ISDs that if you do it our way, you can tear up all the collective bargaining agreements, you can tear up all that district's commitments, you can ignore your own collective bargaining agreements with respect to your own people, you'll be an agent of the state, you'll make lots of money, so on and so forth. So this is what's going on presently. We get little glimpses of it. I look at the third grade bill as more of another way educational legislation gets passed. If somebody's going to be up on it and misreads what happened to a certain individual child in a particular school, or what should have happened to a child in a school, and they decide they're going to do something about it, they're allowed to go ahead and do that without really bringing to the table any proof that whatever they're doing makes pedagogical sense, has universal acceptability in other states as a methodology for stemming the tide of alleged deficiencies in reading at the third-grade level. Yeah, this is how stuff gets done. I don't see it as part of the larger pie, but it's indicative of the mindset that we don't need, you know, once we decide how we're going to do it, we don't need, we can brush aside all these local pieces of red tape as they perceive them, which in our minds are, don't you have to get the board's permission to do this? Isn't it kind of up to the Board of Education, the elected Board of Education, whether they want to adopt this kind of methodology within their school district? So the last 20 years has been a slow ebb towards disenfranchising the limits of local power with respect to public education. And counterintuitively, to what I thought was the Republican mantra, the centralization and command-control structure being put in place for public education.
Well, it's really following the Pasternak model where
Correct.
You dissolve the entire district, prioritize it. The other thing to be noted is when you start this new, the contracts don't follow, the collective bargaining contracts don't follow. So we really could see another iteration of what happened in New Orleans where they laid off 6,000 teachers and brought in teacher
Oh, there's no question. This, this, never more has there been an issue that, regardless of issues at the bargaining table with respect to current collective bargaining titles, this is a union that ought to be bringing together both, an issue that ought to be bringing together both unions and districts, because it also involves privatization. Remember, when you go through this new empowerment district law, they've, they've rung every bell they had to ring. They've put into para that the manager, like an emergency manager, can tear up collective bargaining agreements. They've enabled only two kinds of districts. Every school district in Michigan must directly employ its teachers and therefore has to contribute to the retirement system. Well, the statute that says that, they purport to exempt the new kind of districts they're creating. Those districts will not have to directly employ their teachers. They can hire them through a third-party provider. And as you've seen with the substitute laws over the years, you know, that, they've been eroding as best they can that particular requirement. And of course, charters don't have to abide by that statute because it's only applicable to K-12s as it is. So they've exempted from that. They've exempted the superintendent statute that you have to follow from these districts. They've exempted these districts from a variety of teaching certificate requirements for the people teaching our children in what will be their classrooms under their governance. They won't have to have the required certifications that your teachers presently have to have, and which in varying degrees, you've agreed in your collective bargaining agreements that people should have. So all that's going to be an exception where they're concerned, but continue to be enforced with dwindling revenues for you to pay for those commitments in the case of a district like yours. So again, there are people that are currently kind of on the forefront of pushing back on, on these kinds of pieces of legislation. I would encourage you to find out through your superintendent who those folks are. There are allegiance opportunities where you can get involved in at least being kept on the list of the latest, you know, movements in these areas. Everybody's got lobbyists working on this thing. Lobbyists bother me because, I mean, one person will tell me, this person's their lobbyist for being against this, and then two weeks later, another firm's telling me that's their same lobbyist for being for this thing. So I never know where those guys stand, but there's quite a bit of pushback developing. And so it's little wonder that even districts like Bloomfield Hills said, "We want you to come in and make the same presentation." They're concerned about this. And yet, demographically, they're pretty attenuated from this. They don't border Detroit, but they can clearly see philosophically that this, this is just, you know, the beginning of the end for institutions like locally-elected boards of education.
Have you reached out to any of the editorial pages to try and have your firm?
I, I'm sure people have.
Well, I was just wondering if the firm
I haven't. I haven't. But I'm sure people are attempting to do that. The other kind of interesting bill that is also on the horizon that looks like a countermeasure to this is a bill sponsored by Mr. Kinesik over in Redford where they made one verbal change to the consolidation law. Herefore, when you consolidated, it usually ended up being punitive in terms of the resultant school aid that would flow to the now-consolidated district. It would mean a richer district was getting less, and the lesser-paid district might not be getting any more, and in fact, conceivably, could have been got, getting less too. Well, they simply flipped that and simply made it a reward. If you consolidate, you'll get at a minimum $100 more per student. So now you've got politicians who are going to the same constituency that elected the Redford Union School Board, for example, and they're saying, wouldn't you rather pay, play for a bigger powerhouse football team? Wouldn't you rather have a district with $100 more to spend on your kid than this district is currently spending on your kid? And they're agitating towards, you know, anticipated passage of a bill whereby the Redford voters would vote to approve to be either consolidated with or annexed by South Redford because there would be more money for everyone and a better football team to boot, so they say. Yet, nobody's telling them that the cherry-picking of their buildings will be irrespective of whether South Redford and Redford still exist, because they'll have the same rights with respect to the consolidated district, to the buildings within it, that they would have had if they had never consolidated. And did the proponents in South Redford, you know, in favor of a consolidation, understand when they were budgeting all these new students and the higher pursuit and amount they were going to get, that they might be losing four buildings, you know, right off the bat? Well, that caused the whole thing to cool down a little bit, I think, I hope, and for people to step back and say, you know, was that just a carrot that, you know, you know, Kinesik's a Democrat, so it looked like he was proposing something that would be beneficial, and yet it seemed to be sort of playing into the hands of the other opposite parties' members in terms of facilitating, supposing South Redford didn't touch Detroit, but Redford did, and now the consolidated district, the entirety of it touches Detroit. South Redford might have been immune with respect to buildings it had with Detroit kids in it, because it didn't touch Detroit, now it does. They hadn't thought that through. The Democrats hadn't thought that through either. So the fact that a Democrat-sponsored bill that looks like for calling for spending more money may meet with no resistance in a Republican House automatically makes you scratch your head and say, what's really going on here? And that's really what's going on. Districts that see an opportunity emerge that heretofore have not, Lampheer, Madison Heights, because now they get more money, might create a larger district that now hits Detroit in a, in a way it didn't before. So all these things are connected, and so I would encourage you, there's no harm in, in boards passing resolutions in principle, like the one you passed tonight, to make comment on what appears to be a methodical disenfranchising of local elected boards.
We were just waiting to see the package.
George, thank you for
Yes.
...make a contribution. And more importantly, the disenfranchising boards, they're disenfranchising communities and voters and parents, because local boards provide the accountability their parents and community members, residents have in controlling public education, which is the whole idea. So it's completely anti-democratic with a small d. It's, it's breathtaking in its audacity to dismantle one of the fundamental tenets of American democratic government.
And it's also typical overreach. The governor swears up and down that all he ever meant was to write a solution for Detroit. So then when people push back and say, well, why did you create these generic entities that could be anywhere at any time, based on a singular person's determination, that I don't think you're fiscally healthy enough to remain as you are? And he just brushed it off as his typical lawyers tried to overreach and write in a method that would transcend applicability in Detroit. And the message that sends to me is that, you know, they got caught. The story that this was about Detroit got debunked. People really read these bills and realized they have universal applicability to Pontiac, Saginaw, you know, maybe as far west as, I don't know, Battle Creek, whatever. And they will address all the Pontiac, Saginaws, and Detroit's yet to come, because if things continue the way they're continuing, there will be Pontiacs, Detroit's, and things like that yet to come, because it's just a matter of time before they can't sustain themselves due to the slow drain off of their assets, the changing of the structures around them, disenfranchising of ISDs, so on and so forth. So it's worth watching. Normally, I don't wear my politics on my sleeve, but I don't see this as political. I see this more as, because I've always prefaced my insurfaces to you that I thought locally-elected boards were one of the more fundamental building blocks of our democratic system with a small d. That's what I meant. And so I do see this as, as a challenge to a democratic way of governing. As imperfect and as ugly as that can be sometimes, it's the best anyone's ever been able to show me. And this is clearly a frontal assault on that, as far as I'm concerned. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, George.
Thank you, George.
Any other questions?
No.
Alan, I've ruined your evening.
I'm going to say weak, but, all right, thank you, George. Moving on to, I don't remember, it was on the poll. You got a PowerPoint?
Yeah. Thank you very much. I get to file that up. I appreciate it. That's true. All right, so I'm going to speak briefly about our enrollment. We've gone through count day just recently, so we're kind of starting to get the picture to form of where we're at as far as our enrollment numbers. I will preface everything you're about to see by saying that nothing is final yet. We still have two-plus weeks of count at the TCEC, as well as we still have some pupil accounting we have to go through with the state with their auditing to verify our numbers. So things could shift slightly, but we're pretty confident that this is a fairly accurate picture, or as accurate a picture as you can get at this point. Okay, so the good news is, is it appears that where we stand now is that we're going to end our 11th semester decline. Now, what that means is, starting in the spring of 2010 and following for the next 10 consecutive, 10 consecutive semesters after that, we've declined in student enrollment, meaning we had less people in the spring than we had in the fall, and less people the next fall than we had the previous spring. So it appears now, as long as our numbers stay, stay close to where they are now, that we will finally have stemmed that tide, which is very good. Just giving a quick enrollment snapshot, currently, district-wide, K-12 plus, adult ed, and UHS, we're up across the board. So K-12, K-12, I'm going to say a lot of pluses and minuses here, but K-12 minus UHS and adult ed, we're up about 36 students. UHS and adult ed combined are up about 110 students. Our early childhood center has, has really been going gangbusters. We're up 32 students total. Plus, this has 21 on the waitlist. Dina, is that correct, or is it more than? Yeah, there's more now. So I will be out of an office here probably around Christmas. So if anybody has a spare office that I could stay in, that would be greatly, I know Kim wants me to come back over here, so that would be greatly appreciated. Adult education is also up 73 students. That's a little bit of a misnomer. They're not funded the same way FTE-wise as other students are, so we get a portion of an FTE for those adult ed students, but as far as just butts in seats, we're up 73 over what we were last year. So the good news is, we're up both resident and schools of choice over last year, about 19 resident students, about 138 schools of choice. We're also up at six of our eight schools, so this, again, this is a district-wide raise. You will see that FHS is down 14 students, JFK is down 17. That's a bit of a misnomer as well. The reason JFK is down is we did move one of the kindergarten classes out of JFK and over to Roosevelt. So if you were to take that kindergarten class and put it back at JFK, there's enough extra students at Roosevelt this year that you would still both be up at JFK and Roosevelt. So technically, it's, it's six of eight, but it should be seven of eight schools are up. These are our enrollment trends. Again, this is, you're looking at here is our total enrollment from 2010 to present. That's minus adult education, UHS. So you can see we're at 2,491 five years ago. Now we're at 2,169. You can see the, the year-by-year decline, and now we're up approximately 36 students this year. I guess it's just what that looks like, like on the, on the chart. So if you add in with adult ed and UHS, as you can see, we're at 3,900 about five years ago. Now we're down to 3,010, but that's still up about 140 students over what we were last And I'll also point out that, that 2,870 is the fall count, our spring count, or that's the combined count. So what that means is you average the two different count periods, the fall and the spring. We were around 2,900 last fall. By last spring, we were down around 2,711. So if you look at from where we were from last spring to where we are now, we're up about 300 students. Again, this is just that, that trend on the, on the graph. So looking at where we were, schools of choice, again, this is K-12 minus, adult ed and UHS. Back in 2010, we were at 2,491 students. That was about 85% resident. As you can see now, we, we've dropped, you know, about 300 students, but our, also our resident percentage has dropped as well. We're down to about 77% resident now, 23% school of choice. So not only we down the total number of students from five years ago, but also the mix is a little bit different as well. Not, not drastically so, but it is starting to shift. If you look at the K-12 with adult ed and UHS, again, we're down about 900 students over where we were five years ago, but you'll notice that our resident population in, and as a whole, has gone up. So if you look at So, if you look at district-wide, our resident percentage has gone up about 4% over the last five years. So, what we did here was, this is what I like to call the pipeline. So, if you look at it, the number on the left is the total student number in each class between kindergarten and 12th grade. So, you can see our average at the bottom is about 166 students in each grade with 128 being residents. What I find really encouraging about this slide is, if you look at our 11th and 12th grade classes, or actually 10th grade too, we're, you know, between 120 and 126 students. But if you look down at kindergarten and first grade, we're at 140 residents, and kindergarten 141 residents in first grade. So, you can see our number of resident students is starting to climb back up. So, I think it's a very encouraging sign for where we're going in the future. Finally, just to talk about what Mr. Butler was just talking about, just to kind of give you a frame of reference as far as where we're at with Detroit students in Ferndale Public Schools. District-wide, about 20% of our district are about 600 students, give or take, are Detroit residents. UHS is about 75% Detroit residents. The TCEC is about 62%. Roosevelt is significantly less than 1%, it's about five students. All Montessori students out of 400 and however many are in that building, I don't have the exact number off the top of my head, 420, 430, somewhere in there. And just to give you the Montessori numbers as well, we're at about 21 Oakland County residents, five Wayne County residents, so that's the breakdown on that as well. So, that's all I have. If anybody has any questions, I'm happy to take them.
This is Jim.
Sure.
Well, this isn't really a question.
Poor God.
I just think you've been doing, since you've been here, and since Blake has been here, and the whole team, such a phenomenal job in communications with community, in events like the tailgate that brings the community together, and that we have these numbers where our resident, or our number of resident students increased in a year that we had to make a lot of tough decisions, and a couple, over a couple of years that we've had to make a lot of tough decisions. Speaks not only to what we're doing with education, but how we're talking about it, and who we're talking to, and who we're involving in all sorts of different processes. So, I want to make sure that you get due credit for making that happen, and I'm looking forward to working, you know, working more with you on our new board marketing and communication committee and keeping that momentum going. So, thank you.
You're very welcome. Thank you.
I know I was cautiously optimistic when we had the early projected numbers, now I'm firmly an optimist. Thank you very much for that one. You also have any questions or comments for Bill?
I'd just like to agree, I think it's really exciting to see not only that our numbers are going up, but that our district students are going up, especially in our early grades. And being, you know, with a kid who's in preschool, I mean, early childhood parents are really excited about Ferndale right now. It's really, really fun to have people talk to me about schools.
Like you said, we had the same experience at the Fall Festival, the Hilton Festival, and a lot of parents saying the same things. The other thing I want to say, and actually Blake pointed this out, is that this is projections based on, you know, thoughts that numbers of children stay the same. In fact, the various projections suggested there are fewer children in the district of these particular ages. So, the fact that actually the numbers are up, the numbers are up over a smaller baseline. So, the percentage is higher even than the numbers that you suggest.
Yeah, we were looking at some numbers the other day. Since 2010, and this is just a complete amount of eligible students within our district, has gone down 600 students within the last five years. So, I mean, when you're talking about that much of a population decline, not even that are electing to go elsewhere, just aren't here anymore, it's scary to look at.
When you saw, I think it was the article in the Free Press, that they went through the Oakland County, and it's not all Oakland County schools submitted, but, you know, even when you look at the traditional districts where you think that they would gain, you know, Brandon, Clarkston, Lake Orion, all that north quadrant, none of them gained, they all dropped. You know, we were one of the few districts that have gained this year. So, it's just interesting, you know, some districts, hundreds, I heard Walthall Lake, yeah, Walthall Lake dropped about 400 students, you know, under projection. So, in that time period, and when all the projections from Plant Moran show that we're going to have less residents, I mean, to me, it's a good sign that we're seeing some come back and we're seeing a stabilization.
And I think, just going back to George Butler's presentation, what people in the community wanted from their school board and their district leadership was more accountability and more outreach, more communication. They wanted to see more residents going to Ferndale schools. They demanded that. They elected a different Board of Education to do that. Now, we don't actually do it. All we can do is empower you all to do it, and you've done it really tremendously. And people wanted more residents going, but by and large, people don't want fewer schools of choice. They want to see, they want to make sure that we're appealing to residents and schools of choice students, and not just pitching the schools of choice to try to fill gaps or to, so we can ignore other parents. And I think the other positive thing that I see here is how well in here in the district, not just in the enrollment numbers, but how well schools of choice do here, and how successfully, especially over the past couple of years, we've done at really bringing them into Ferndale and making them a complete whole part of our school. And so I think that's a positive, and it, you know, it doesn't bother me that the school percentage number has ticked up a bit because it's in the context of that resident number also moving in the right direction, and that there's room in our schools for both residents and schools of choice. And in fact, all of our residents are also choosing Ferndale as basically their own school choice.
So, Bill, not now, but, you know, maybe at another meeting, I'm looking out at one of our local commissioners, and I'm wondering if maybe we could also get some data to track trends within municipalities, because I know that there were certain municipalities that we had more and less attendance from.
Sure. That takes a little bit, yeah, it takes a little bit more digging, but that's certainly something we can do.
I'd be interested to learn about that.
So, related to that, I think, you know, the whole idea of the fact that our resident population, our children, we have fewer children here, and it's going, that number's going down according to all our sources. So, I would just like to caution the board and everyone out there that we cannot rest on our laurels, and we do have fewer kids in our community, and so we have to work extra hard not to lose any of them as we move forward. And one thing I want to thank you, Bill, for is your recent efforts to engage our parents in that effort. So, I know that you had a Ferndale District ambassadors, I'm echoing. Ferndale District ambassadors meeting, and so that's a way to, he's asking you to turn it down. Turn it down. No, no.
Oh.
So, that's going all the way to Chicago and coming back.
Yes. Okay, so I'll start again. So, Ferndale District ambassadors is a meeting.
Thank God, silence Jim.
But you.
But don't silence Amy.
Sorry.
You guys all know the point I'm trying to make, but I think it's important that we make sure that we continue to engage our parents. It is a partnership. It is word of mouth. It's our biggest tool to make sure that people come here, especially our residents, but also, like Jim said, our schools of choice students. I think that it's important that we include all of those voices, and I'm glad that, I'm glad that you're kind of reinvigorating that group, and, you know, I'm excited to see where that's going to go, and, you know, it's a good feeling to have that collaboration.
I thought you were going to encourage people to go out and have more children.
I know, I thought you were going to have free babysitting and wine on Fridays.
That's a different program. The ambassadors, that's a different program.
That's what the French did, right? They instituted romantic weekends and happy babysitting.
All right, any other questions, Bill?
As long as that's not my department, we're good.
Thank you so much, Bill.
Well, I know you're doing your part.
And we had no hold items from the consent agenda, so now we can move on to number 10, which is Eagles' Point of Pride, and I'm just going to exit this off and start with Kevin.
And it's easy for me because, and I'm going to do this again for the second month in a row, we can repeat, right? So, I want to, my Point of Pride is all those people who have started to get out and talk to the community about the bond issues coming up, so November 3rd.
Milage.
Milage, excuse me, not bond issue, milage. Non-homestead, excuse me, so, non-homestead renewal. So, we all go to the ballot box on November 3rd, and one of the things we'll see on the ballot is the millage that allows us to stay in operation, and it doesn't change taxes or anything else. Lots of people have been out talking to people, and over the next couple of weeks, a lot of people have volunteered to knock on doors, drop lit, and do everything they can to make sure that many knows about this and they vote for it. We've had a lot of good luck at the Hilton Road Festival and other things, talking to people, and everything seems to understand and know, but it's question of getting that information out there. The other thing I want to say, actually, on that same side, is the Point of Pride to me that people are starting to talk about the question of nonpartisan redistricting in Michigan. And Michigan's one of the few states that could get rid of gerrymandering by a public vote, and the legal and voters and common cause are starting to look at this. If we take George seriously, then the only thing that's really going to stop this is to stop gerrymandering districts so that the percentage of votes, which in Michigan is about 50/50, translates into the percentage of seats, which is now about 70/30. So, when people are out there talking about the millage, talk to your neighbors about gerrymandering and how we can get rid of it. The League is doing a bunch of public forums, and I'll talk to Bill at the beginning, some of those listed on the calendar. We're going to try to do one in Ferndale in late November, December.
Amy? I would like to just give a bit of recognition to the people in our district who work after hours, and an example of that is, of course, parent-teacher conferences, all of our teachers who stay late in order to talk to the parents about their students. And also, another example of that is a really fun event that happened last week at Harding, the Halloween trick-or-trunk, trunk-or-treat that the Early Childhood Center hosted last week. I thought it was a great event, and it was a great way for families to participate, and, you know, that's, it was, what was it, four to seven at night or whatever, and, you know, that's extra time that our staff puts in, and it's really, really appreciated.
I would like to give a shout-out this month to our counselors. I think that they are unsung heroes often, and I have had the pleasure of working with some of the counseling staff, and things that they do are nothing short of miraculous, and they're just angels in the building that I'd like to recognize.
I'm going to go off Kevin's area a little bit. I sent something out to the whole school district. Every Friday, I do an Eagle Pride email, and I've been talking about the non-homestead millage and the effect on the district, and one area that I focused in on this week was preschool. Preschool is not mandatory. We do not have to do it. And, you know, that's one of the areas that if the non-homestead millage weren't there, that 4 million, that 14%, we couldn't afford to run a preschool. Yet, that is our pipeline into our district. That is, and every bit of education literature shows, that's where we need to start. If we want to solve this third-grade reading issue that the state thinks we have, then give me money to do preschool. So, we look at what that program's bringing, that's one of the big areas, you know, that like a non-homestead renewal helps. I mean, this is 14%, $4 million of our budget. You know, our band, what they're doing, you know, they've won two competitions so far this year. You know, our drama, the reading specialists that we have in our district, the social workers that we have in our district, you know, you look at that 14%, that non-homestead millage, it's been with us for 20 years, that covers so much of what we do. So, I just, you know, want to remind everyone to make sure they get out and vote. You know, that is important to the district, and more importantly, it's important to our kids and our kids' future.
I will kind of expand on what Amy said and talk about the people that put so much time and effort into the district, and we have so many people that make the district run, and if it wasn't for a lot of the parent volunteers, so many things also wouldn't happen. The JFK Fall Festival on Saturday was highly attended. It was a wonderful eclectic group of people that came to the event. The kids were ecstatic, and it's just so fun to see the kids identify their seasons as fall is Fall Festival JFK, and spring, summer kicks off with the June Fair at Roosevelt. So, bringing those two families together is so wonderful, and I'm still looking forward to seeing how it's going to move with the transition. And then all the, I think I saw almost every single teacher at the festival on Saturday from JFK, which was absolutely incredible, and other staff there that was working diligently and making sure all the kids, who were in the parents were, and had a great time.
I just want to know if Liz made the salsa, that's.
No, I don't. Dave Alora.
Oh, it was excellent.
Right. So, there was a tremendous number of parents and students and volunteer there, and it was wonderful. And I've also met several Sundays with Mike Thomas, who's over at Roosevelt, to prepare for the upcoming talent show, JFK Talent Show, which is on November 7th, 7 o'clock, at the Loving Touch. So, it'll be another fun evening. Good night. Shout-outs.
My Point of Pride this month is to the bus drivers. They're awesome. I mean, my bus drivers right now are Ms. Donna and Ms. Michelle, and they keep my kids safe. I've had Patty for years. I don't have a kid on her bus right now, but it's a huge feeling of relief to know that your kid is with them, and that they know them personally and take care of them, and I love them.
My Point of Pride is, I just happened to hop into the Ferndale Youth Assistance Bowl fundraising fundraiser, and it was just really nice to see all of the teachers and the teams that were out in support of the kids. It was nice to see Blake bowl.
I hear not many of them.
It was not nice to see Blake bowl.
It was nice to see the team. I didn't expect that, so that's what caught my eye when I walked in, to see all of these people coming out for the kids, and these are people in our building that I know, so that's my Point of Pride. Hopefully, youth assistance did well.
I'm just hoping Jim's Point of Pride is Technology Department, just wish.
Yeah, it's Brandon's point. Actually, a new hearing to pay attention to the whole school board meeting.
Did she? Yeah. Did she hear that?
Did you hear that, Marie?
His Point of Pride is you.
I'm going to do a lot better job now that I know that she's sitting so still and paying attention.
He's right behind you, so he can see you through the whole meeting.
Jim, she's still because she's asleep.
Yes.
No.
She needed to. All right, yeah, so, anyway, and also, just a Point of Pride throughout several points in this meeting to the people that were going to ask for more money, who are the voters, because I think the accountability that they hold all of us to is one of the reasons that, you know, we have the results that we've been seeing over this past year and a half. And if it wasn't for them both supporting us with their tax dollars and supporting a board that tries to put together goals that make sense, and hiring an administration that's doing the great work that they're doing, you know, without them, this district doesn't look like what it does. So, I hope that once again they'll come out on November 3rd and vote, cast on our millage.
If I could just supplement that by pointing out that we're actually not asking them for any more money, that no one will see any change in their tax bill because of what happens, unless we refuse to approve the millage, in which case, there will be a big change in the tax bill, and also a big change in the quality of education, not in a positive direction, so.
And I'm confident they will see it that way, too.
Okay, so, our next regular board meeting is Monday, November 16, 2015, which is 13 days after you have the opportunity to go vote on the millage, just a last reminder. And I will now adjourn the meeting at 9:49.